The meeting to order, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. Kind of a rainy afternoon, but hey, can't complain. We had a great weekend, weather-wise. Roll call, please. It will be short today.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Maureen Bory.
Here.
Joanne Shirkey.
Absent excuse.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Kristi Hilton.
Absent excuse.
Crystal Regan.
Absent excuse.
Cindy Valentine, here.
Okay, we do have a quorum. Moving right along, we have bills payable. I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the bills payable in the amount of $211,077.70.
I agree.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion on that? It is high this, we had garbage, our water bill, we pay Algenac, our sewer bill. There's like four big things on there, this.
Right.
This go around that's.
Sewer.
Sewer.
Wastewater treatment.
Yep. So I just want to let everyone know. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Motion passes. I'm waiting for more.
Well, that's.
That's quick.
Boom.
Motion passes. Okay, next, we have a public hearing. We were going to try to schedule a public hearing for tonight, but the, it didn't get publicized in the paper, right? So we need to pass, postpone that, pass this resolution setting the, the public hearing for our next meeting in September 7th.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2125, setting the public hearing for the general police and fire operating mills and garbage and refuse fees for September 7th, 2021.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, for our highlight, the supervisor's report. All right, we're still negotiating a collective bargaining unit with MAF. And actually, we, I, it's changed since I typed this. We did receive a counterproposal, which we'll get the team together and review and see where we stand with that. Hopefully, we won't have to go to arbitration, but we'll see. Still working on the initial plans for the public bathroom at the Pearl Beach Pier with cost estimates. And also, we're working on the abandonment of the road, basically to the water's end for the Pearl Beach Boulevard. That's going to be abandoned to Clay. We have all the, all the documents done and everything. I just want to get 100% buy-in with the neighbors before we, you know, it's nice to kumbaya. Working on final phases on the $1.1 million Saw Grant. Have you heard anything else on that, John? I got an email about, from them asking, and Anthony says we're, we're doing good, so.
Yeah, we're.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure we're, let the board know we're on schedule. And actually, we've been doing a lot of work past couple of weeks on our bonding for MERS. And with a little luck, they should be ready to present to our board first meeting in September. Met with St. Clair County Road Commission and Michigan State Police about the intersection in Nook and Fruit. We've been getting a lot of fender benders there. They agreed after we came along, it was probably an hour and a half meeting. We're going to put additional blinking signs on the stop signs that were installed and a couple more each-way cross-traffic-do-s not-stop signs. They were talking about doing some rumble strips, but I guess the, the ones that they would have to use are still in, they're not having good luck with them because the snowplows scrape them off. So they're, they're still looking at that. But they're going to have flashing lights, stop sign, and additional signage that the, the other, Nook doesn't stop. Got really kind of disappointing news, I thought it was. Received an email from the United States Wildlife and Fisheries Department. We use them for our sturgeon festival. For us to catch a sturgeon, we have to get permitted and for them to, to catch it and, and hold it and, and then we release it when we're done. But they basically said, where is it? Due to probable upcoming protocol restrictions due to the COVID-19 Delta variant, it's highly unlikely that we will be able to have or attend the sturgeon festival along with Michigan DNR. So basically, without that, we really can't have the, the festival. So we're going to cancel the sturgeon festival. The fishing tournament is still going on. We are still doing the fishing tournament, sturgeon tournament. Just, we can't do community outreach and education without sturgeon there. So that's, and I tried to date, get, dig in more what they, they're anticipating for upcoming protocol restrictions, and I, it was crickets. Dealing still a lot of blight and building issues. I had a meeting with the water, about the water plant. And we'll probably be looking at next year replacing the filter membranes. There's three packs, banks of them. We'll be, be replacing at least two of them. And this is a scheduled capital improvement. It's in our capital improvement plan. We usually get between five and seven years from these, these filters. And we replace them at 2015, so we, we got our seven years' worth. And what happens, I, I don't know, we, we should take, we gotta get you in there and see it out.
Yes.
These little filters, they, they break. And, and it lets a bunch of air that normally pushes it through. Actually, filtering cold water is, is a lot harder, rougher on them than the warm water. But I just want to let the board know that will probably be coming down the pipe, so to speak. And the water strainer that we approved the last meeting, that's been ordered, and they're probably expecting install in three to four months. Put a, there's been a lot of talk, me, but a lot of excitement about how Clay Township turns 200 years old next year. And we're doing a big bicentennial celebration. And I did put a committee together of volunteers. We had our initial meeting with about eight people, and it's going to grow. They're, they're, they're pretty excited about it. And we did have the meeting. And a lot of stuff has came out of that meeting. We do have, it's going to be May 6th, 7th, and 8th in next year. We signed the paperwork to incorporate Clay Township 200 years ago, May 8th, by the 1822. And that's why we picked that weekend. And we have, from that meeting, we, we secured Indian Powwow for that Saturday. We're working on Civil War reenactment. We're working on, or we're going to do a time capsule where we bury a, a time capsule and they uncover it 100 years from now. And we're going to ask for suggestions and things what to put in. It's been a lot of fun thinking about it. And it was funny, at the Music in the Park, I thought, boy, it'd be cool to put our rundown with all the bands and everything in it. And then I thought, this is the last music in the park before we bury it in May. And we literally had about 500 people there. I got videotaped. We practiced a couple of times. We did a happy birthday Clay Township 2122, did a video of it. And, you know, 100 years from now, everyone had a good time of that. But I actually have a volunteer that's going to give us poster art. Got a lot of other, other things cooking. We're looking at doing an event in our graveyard where we have like live ghosts in front of all these different graves. And you can go, go through it and, and talk to Christmas graveyard ghosts and garwood. There's a bunch of people buried in there. So, so it's coming together pretty good. Let's see. We did sell one of our, our fire trucks, which we planned on, and that went by by last week because we bought the two new ones, and chief's busy getting them online, and they're looking fantastic. I do want to say kudos to our first responders. This weekend was insane. We had the raft off. We had a lot of events going on. There was the yard sale trail. There was just a lot of people everywhere, which is great. But it was very busy for both our fire and our police. There were some incidents going on, which I can't get into here. But everybody was very busy and utmost professional with all, all the, the tasks that were, was before them. I do want to say a special thank you to Dan and Mary Lou Smith for helping us out of raft off. They gave us their island. Basically, we took their house over with about 25 people. And it would have been really hard to handle that whole situation without them. And I hate doing it, but I gotta give my brother Bob Bryson thanks, too, so. Other than that, there's a lot of stuff going on. We have, I want to remind everyone, the first Saturday in October, we're doing another clay cleanup on the mainland. And Saturday, that Saturday and Sunday, it'll be on the island. We'll do a, a clay cleanup with the dumpsters. I know we have, I think it's October 30th, the Scarecrow Festival going on. And I can't remember in October. We have a bus going for the Lions, too, when they play the Cincinnati Bengals, so that's, that's always fun. That's my supervisor's report. All right. Moving right along. Do we have any public comments? Any public comments? No public comments, okay. Consent agenda. I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the draft minutes from 8 to 2021, check reports, and communication, road watch, the week of August 16th, 2021.
Okay, motion support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, first thing on new business. We have, this is a new program. It's a local, it's through the county, St. Clair County Road Commission. And it's a local large culvert replacement program, which is great for us because we have a lot of large culverts. We've had two that failed. I don't know if everyone remembers when Falkett Road was closed for about a half a year. That was a large culvert. It collapsed. And we had a, holy cow, hurry up and fix this up and order all the material. Then we had one on Bayview Shores that basically did the same thing. We didn't have to close that road, but we had to put, you know, steel plate over it to, to keep it open and then, and then replace that. And they're not cheap. But their, their program, they'll do 50/50 split, up to $150,000 their match. So we can do a $300,000 culvert under this program. And they, they have it up for, for two years, sorry, next year and the following year. And so we, we checked them all out. And we're recommending that year one of this program, we do the second culvert. It's actually the first culvert on Bayview Shores. Because there was one right next to it that collapsed two years ago. And we're, you know, they were putting it in the same time, same, actually, first one gets a little bit more traffic. So we have a resolution to approve going forward with the local road match to replace the first culvert on Bayview Shores. And we can entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2126, local road funding for culvert matching funds, 2223 for Bayview Shores. Also, Riverside Drive, or just.
Oh, we, we gotta do one at a time, unfortunately.
I'll support pending discussion.
Okay, we have motion support. Any discussion on that? This one is.
Well, I'm like, question about Bayview Shores.
Yeah, okay.
Do they have any estimated cost?
Yes. Bayview Shores was $150,000 estimated.
Okay, so this resolution is going to allow us to pay half of that?
Yep.
Homeowners pay the rest?
Yep. No, we, St. Clair County pays half of it, and then we pay half of it, the taxpayers.
Okay.
Comes out of our budget, right?
Yeah.
So, so they're going to be, over a period of how many years? Any of that been discussed?
Well, this would be replaced next fiscal year.
Twenty-two.
Yep.
So is that usually on a 12-month, five-year plan, or what, for the homeowners to pay?
What do you mean?
No, the township pays that, Mark.
Township pays it.
Township pays it.
Yes.
Part of our roads budget.
Yep, just how we pay our, when we repave a road or anything else.
Okay, so.
It's not a private road. It's a public road.
Okay, I, I thought it was a private road at one point in time.
Nope.
Okay.
Okay.
I retract my question.
All right, no, it's all good. Okay, so everyone understands this, the motion for Bayview Shores? Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes. Okay, the second one is basically the same thing. This would be two, two fiscal years from now, and this is for Riverside Drive. And the estimate, estimate cost on this one is 200,000. So it would be, we'd be getting 100,000 from the county, and we would be responsible for 100,000. And we've had issues with this starting to degrade. The one, the west side, the seawall's falling out, you can see. And I know we have to go in there and, and patch holes where it's compacting and, and weakening. So, you know, we've been doing, doing a lot of patchwork with it. So.
So you said they would pay up to 300,000, so 100 on this one and 75 on the other one?
Yep, yeah, it's a 50/50 match. So entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-27, request for local road culvert matching funds, Riverside Drive.
Support.
Okay, motion support. And again, this one, the estimate cost is 200. So we'd be ahead by 100,000 on this, so. Roll call, please.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, thank you. This, motion passes. Next is our UHY engagement letter. And this is to perform our OPEB study, which is required by the state of Michigan now. I think this is a requirement that just put in place, I think, two years ago.
Correct.
So they're going to do our OPEB study for a cost of $2,000.
Can you define what OPEB study is about?
It's, well, the OPEB, that's about basically our healthcare retirement for all the retired employees of, of the township, both past and present, that we were required to take care of healthcare after their retirement.
It's all of our liabilities for post-employment benefits, other than pension.
Yes. That was a shorter version.
Thank you, Cindy.
I'll make a motion to approve the UHY liability engagement letter for OPEB for $2,000 from line 101265805.
Okay, motion support. Roll call, please.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have the UHY engagement letter for our annual audit for $31,800, line item 101265805. And for the new people, well, I say new people, not the old people.
Current.
Current. We, we used to pay back with Plant Moran. Oh, it, it was close to $100,000 for this by the time we.
In Plant Moran's defense, it wasn't all them.
No.
There was nobody here.
There was a lot of prep.
There was nobody here doing anything at month end.
Yeah, there was a lot of prep. They had to go and reconcile the, you know, all the statements. There was a lot of prep that Plant Moran did. And you can thank Kristi here and Cindy for taking a lot of that. This used to be a $100,000 expense.
So it's just once a year?
Yes.
This expense?
I'll make a motion to approve the UHY LP Annual Audit Engagement Letter for $31,800 from line 101265805.
Okay, motion support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. All right, next we have, this is for a special assessment on the Colony Isles. And it's for aqua treatment of the canals to, for all the weeds, so they don't get caught in everyone's propellers. And it's going to do all the, all the canals between, oh, Marina Aqua Isle and Park Lane Riverside. And not between Aqua Isle and Colony, am I right?
Right.
Doesn't do that one. Colony's, yeah. But it's going to do the other three canals and a little more, so. I didn't, is this a, oh, it's a five-year, so it's a five-year special assessment. And that's what this resolution is for. And we have.
Is it the cost on that?
Well, yeah, it's in the, total cost is 37,000.
Yeah, 515.
And.
So this is something, Mark, that the residents will be paying for?
Yeah, this is, this is for the residents. They're the ones that benefit from it.
For five years, and there's 143 parcels.
And they all, what's the percentage on this one? 88.46 are in favor of it, of the residents. That's pretty good.
That's pretty high, yeah.
So we have, you know, there's a series of resolutions in the public hearing we have to do for this, so. It's like a self-imposed tax, these special assessments. We have a few of them tonight, so. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2128, proceeding with the Colony Isles petition.
Support.
Okay, I have motion support. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes. Motion passes. Just rolling right through them. All right, next we have the resolution is for the Colony Isles Special Assessment to move forward with set a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2129, Colony Isles Canals Resolution Number Two. This resolution is setting the public hearing for September 20th, 2021, at 6 o'clock. The Township Board will be meeting on Hurson's Island on that date. If we put it off to another meeting, that puts us into October. So although it's a, you know, I understand it's a situation for residents over here, but in the essence of time, we put it on for our Hurson's Island meeting.
They can respond by email?
Yes.
Or a letter, too, so.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support for the setting of public hearing. Any discussion?
Other than what Cindy said about the residents not being totally involved over on Hurson's Island since it impacts them here and not over there.
There's a second public hearing also.
Yeah, there's more than one public hearing. We're, for these special assessments, we have to do two public hearings.
Right.
So we'll have one, one more over here.
They're very time-consuming with all the resolutions that we need to pass. So putting it, we couldn't get it on the next meeting. We couldn't get it published in time. So therefore, we'd be pushing it off even further into October, and then we have more resolutions that need to be passed. So we just, in the essence of time.
When do they schedule to do the maintenance? Does that have to be in the fall, or is it going to be in the spring?
This is next year, isn't it?
Okay.
Right, it starts in the spring.
Yeah, next spring.
Treatment for five years continuously. They have two treatments per year.
Okay.
And I can't believe that we wouldn't have, how much pushback we'd have on that, since it is a bridge repair and the way they get to their home, right?
No, this isn't the bridge repair. This is for the canal.
This is treatment of the canal.
Oh, okay.
And almost 89% said they're for it. So. And it looks like with the amount of, you know, 37 grand and 143 parcels in five years, it's not going to be, you know, a real big cost, right?
No.
For each resident.
Yeah, 50, yeah, 58 a year.
Right. Okay.
Get the weeds out of your canal. We have motion support, right?
We do.
Roll, any more discussion? Roll call.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, one F. I have a resolution to proceed with the North Channel Drive West Bridge Repair. And this one has 21 parcels involved. It's, they have a little over 70% agreeing to it.
27, right? 27 parcels? I see.
Well, this, this district consists of 22.
Oh, it said.
There's some that don't get a benefit from it, so they're not included.
I got it.
How many years is this spread out over? Is it 20 or 15?
That's what the board needs to determine.
Okay, we'll have to meet on that again, or, that's why we, we only have the one on the, on this one and the next one. We have to, to determine between these two special assessments for this road. It's going to cost about $150,000. So we're gonna, we have a discussion. We have two choices. We can self-fund it and pay it out of our general and, and collect interest on it. And then through the special assessment, we'll be repaid. And, or we can go out and borrow $150,000 to, for the special assessment. And then we basically, when we get the special assessment, you know, the payment in for these roads this year one, we, we pay off the loan.
Is this the bridge repair?
This one, there's bridge and the road. This is the bridge.
Oh, okay, I'm looking at the bridge.
Yep.
I'm looking at the bridge. It says 90,000 in the letter.
Right, but then the one behind it is 60,000.
Oh.
So total, we're looking at, you know, 150. So we have to determine, I myself, I, I don't feel comfortable going past 15 years. Have, have you heard, was 10 years too much for them, Sherri? I know they wanted to go 20. I don't know if there's anyone here from there. I, oh, are, are you? Okay.
Rod, where's Sherri?
Rod, how you doing, Rod?
This person for that proposal district.
What, what's your feelings on the length?
Can you have him come up to the podium?
Time. You want to come on up here and?
Is this out already?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Rod Povensey, Hurson's Island. I'm the representative for the subdivision area that we need to redo the bridge. We call it Bridge Culvert, whatever.
Yeah.
And the road that goes to the west that's paved already. We were hoping to get 20 years for the road. I was hoping to get 20 years for everything, but maybe we can segregate it. If you don't feel comfortable with the road for 20 years, 15, we'll, we would be happy with 15. We're at the 15-year point right now, and the existing road still is usable. It's starting to go when we want to get ahead of the game. The bridge portion, if we could get the 20 years, that's going to be there for a long time. We had a study on the culvert. They say the culvert's sound, and we don't anticipate any problems.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Yeah, my, my big fear is, you know, you're, you're doing a special assessment, and then say we go 20 years, but we're 15 years and we gotta fix it again. And there's still paint on it, you know, it's, you know. And I, I agree with Rod. The, the culvert does look good. Were you there when I met, I, I met with a, a whole bunch of neighbors there last?
I was there at the pitch and eaty house.
Yes, last year. And I, I think I explained that to them then, but, um, um, but we, we're not going to decide the time length right, right now, but I think we could, we could probably do 20 years on the bridge, but the road, I would recommend do 15, no more than 15. So, that's, that's my own personal feeling. I just want to bring that up for the board. You know, we'll, we'll be considering that the next time. But right now, we're just, uh, this resolution is to proceed forward with the North Channel West Bridge Repairs.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 21-30, the Special Assessment District, North Channel Drive West, for private bridge improvement, Resolution One.
Support.
We have motion and support. You, you used project control on this, didn't you?
I, yes, I used two engineering for the, for the culvert, but just project control was involved.
Yeah, okay. I may give them a call myself, too, but, um, all right, sounds good. We have motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Arty Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Okay, and this is, uh, passes. This is resolution to go forward with a special assessment. And, uh, this is to pave the road. Your first one was for the bridge, and we had to split it up because everybody on the road benefits from the bridge. Not everybody, uh, benefits from the road paving, because it was a split, and we're going one way and not the other way. In case you were wondering. Um, and this is, uh, 58,759 plus interest and administrative costs. So, um, uh, basically the same thing. We're going to have to make the, make the decision, you know, as far as the length, um, and that kind of thing. And these projects, too, one thing scares me. We do a special assessment, then we get into it, and holy cow, we need 15, 20 more grand, and it's not there. So then we gotta go back and ask, so, you know, we gotta, I, I want to make sure when I review the numbers that there is some fudge, fudge in, in it. And if it's not used, we return that back to, uh, the, the Special Assessment District. Did I explain that right? Okay. So.
So 15 years would be on this?
Well, we'll determine that. I would, I would, I would recommend no more than 15 on the road itself. Um, but that, we're not going to decide that, that, tonight. We're just going to decide to go forward with it. So.
Resolution to proceed, but it really won't be approved until everything's.
Yeah, we, we have a couple of public hearings. The special assessments, we have to do about four or five? Five. We gotta do five resolutions. So, the next one, we'll have a, we'll set the public hearing, then after the public hearing, we, we, we have to say we're going to go forward with it, and then set another one. And so, it's a process. So this is to proceed with, uh, paving of the road, which it does need.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept Resolution 20, 2021-31, to proceed with the North Channel West paving petition.
Do I have a second? Have support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Arty Bryson?
Yes. Okay, next I have on the agenda, I'm recommending that to appoint, uh, a new person for, as an alternate. It would be alternate two for our Zoning Board of Appeals. Samantha Bynum, and excuse me, I'm going to call her Sam, because that's how I know her. And, uh, I gave you a letter of recommendation. She's a fellow Muskrat. Thanks, Rod. Yeah, she's a fellow Muskrat, and she's been involved in the community for a long time. And, uh, Sam went and grew up on us and went to law school. She has her law degree, passed her bar. Kudos to, to you for doing that, Sam. And she's pursuing, pursuing a career in government work. And I think, uh, as part of our ZBA, she will bring experience and a unique perspective to our zoning assessments. And, uh, for, uh, people that approach our zoning board. Sam, come on up. We're going to embarrass you a little bit. So.
Hello.
Hello, just say your name and your address and.
So, my name is Samantha Bynum. My address is 930 Lake Point. It's right there. Clay Township, Michigan, 48001.
What, what are you doing for a, a job nowadays?
So I'm currently a prosecutor in Wayne County.
Okay.
Um, and so that's been very time-consuming, but very fun.
I bet.
And most of my short adult life, I've been doing government work, whether I'm interning or, um, working at the prosecutor's office, AG's office, so.
Awesome.
I'm excited to join the board and help out any way I can.
Does anybody have any questions for Samantha?
I read your, uh, resume and, uh, impressed. I think you'd be a good fit to the zoning board. I'm on the planning commission as the board representative, so I'm looking forward to working with you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that, um, we accept your recommendation to, uh, appoint Samantha Bynum as an alternate to the ZBA for the term from starting today, 8/16 of '21 through 11/15 of 2024.
Sounds like a long time. Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any more discussion?
Thank you.
Hearing, we didn't vote yet.
Sorry.
Just relax. Okay, I got her on a hot seat. What's your favorite color? No. All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Sometime we'll have to swing in, get sworn in, and, um, yeah. All right, I'll give your contact info to Cindy in the, um, in the billing department, too.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sam. Good seeing you.
Thanks, Sam.
All right, next, I, I want to reappoint Bonnie Mc, McInerney.
McInerney?
Yes, thank you. Slater, uh, to her term. She's, uh, I think this might be her third term, and, uh, she does a good job on the ZBA. And I will entertain a motion. She, actually, her, her, uh, day job, she's the city manager for New Baltimore. So, uh, we, she, she brings a lot of knowledge with her. And, uh, I think she actually has a law degree, too.
Yes. I'll make a motion to reappoint Bonnie McErnie Slater from 8/16 of '21 through the end of her term, 11/15 of 2023.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And next we have, uh, we have a vacancy on the planning commission. And I've been talking to this gentleman for, is Chris here? I don't see him, um, quite a while, and, uh, he comes, uh, he's actually a civil engineer and does a lot of this kind of work, and I think he would bring a wealth of experience and, uh, knowledge to our planning commission. So I am recommending, uh, Chris Dag, Dagie, uh, for appointment to the planning commission.
Is he here today, or?
No. Couldn't make it.
He's.
He's probably driving home now.
So.
I'll approve the appointment for, uh, Chris Dagie to the Clay Township Planning Commission.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion?
So he works for property engineers now?
Yep.
So, sounds like he has experience.
Oh, yeah.
For planning. Very good.
Lots of it.
Great, okay.
He'll come with, he'll, he's going to bring a lot of knowledge, uh, to us. I'm excited. Motion and support. All in, uh, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have our Assistant Assessor Bonnie Campbell's, uh, contract. She, uh, passed her Level Two. Assessing certification, and we put it in there that once they reach that mark, we can, um, uh, because they're worth it, pay them more money. Basically did the same thing when Sherry was working under, um, Barb, and, uh, we didn't want to train Sherry up and let her go bye-bye, so thought we had to pay her a little more. And that's what we're, uh, proposing to do with Bonnie, Bonnie Campbell. Yep, Level Two. Does this take about two years to get, a year?
It took me two years.
Oh, it took.
They changed the program.
Oh, they changed it. Okay. I know it's pretty, uh, yeah, it's challenging, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the Assistant Assessor contract for Bonnie Campbell for the term of 2021 through 2024. Correct?
Support.
Okay, motion and support. And just so everyone knows how we came up with the dollar figure, we actually looked at, um, the base pay we were paying when Sherry, you know, we did this for Sherry, what, three, four, five years ago, four years? How, how long? It was five years ago, wasn't it, Sherry? Yeah, and, um, uh, she was making X mile dollars above what we were paying in the office, and we took that same rate and did the salary rate, isn't that?
Correct.
So. That's what we did.
40-hour work week?
Yes. They probably do a little bit more than that, but we won't say. They're in here on Fridays a lot.
Oh, boy. Okay.
All right, we have, uh, motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Arty Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. In fact, we already had a township trying to steal it from her at the boat races.
Oh, boy.
Put a stop to that, real quick. All right, next we have, uh, new hire for a part-time employee for the fire department, Benjamin Lee, chief.
Good evening. I'm requesting from Township Board to, um, hire one new firefighter part-time for the fire department, Benjamin Lee. He's a, uh, he owns a dairy farm up in Deckerville. Uh, he has his Michigan Fire One, Fire Two certification. He's also certified as an, uh, as a MFR at this time. He plans on attending an EMT class in the fall. Benjamin, uh, also works part-time for Highland Park Fire Department, and he's passed his, his background check.
You're a hard-working guy, being a dairy farmer.
Yes, sir.
Impressed.
Where's the farm at?
Oh, in Deckerville.
Deckerville?
It's quite a ride all the way to Highland Park.
Yes, it is.
I hope it's not an emergency situation, but, uh, so Deckerville, how far is that from here?
About an hour and a half.
Yeah. Someone like to make a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to, uh, hire Benjamin Lee, uh, as a part-time, uh, Clay Township firefighter.
Support.
Yeah, motion and support. Any questions for Ben? Ben, you know how to swim?
I do.
Good.
Not very good, but I do.
Okay.
We're going to take him on the.
We'll, we'll have a life jacket near you.
We do furnish life jackets.
Yeah, that's right.
He'll get better. He'll get better.
We're going to take him on a, on the, on the airboat and throw him off. That's the initiation, isn't it?
Something like that. All right, any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of, uh, accepting Benjamin Lee as a part-time employee for the fire department, signify by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, congratulations, Ben.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you. All right. And next we have, um, we have our ladder hose testing. Uh, the line item, uh, 206-932 for a little over $5,000.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, current permanent ladder and hose testing for $5,024.39 at line item 206-932.
Support.
Motion and support. Has this price maintained steady?
It's, it's cheaper. It's going to come in a little bit, some cheaper.
A little lesson? What we have been?
When we quoted this, uh, price, it was kind of like last year. Uh, we did have some hose that did fail last year.
Right.
So, uh, it'll come in cheaper.
Okay, good.
That hose that you, the purchase, new purchase hose, you're going to have to test, right?
Right. That, that came with a certificate, uh, tested at the factory, so next year we'll have to do it.
Okay.
Almost 14,000 feet of hose.
Yep.
We're also going to get rid of some of that hose, because it's five inch, and we don't need that much.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion? Everyone that's, uh, in favor of, uh, the ladder and hose testing, uh, the motion presented, signify by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, next we have TPW Sanitary Pump Station Top, Top and Hatch Replacement. We did talk about this, uh, in the budget process, how we were going to, um, have to do that, and, um, we have two of them. So, uh, what are they together? It's 24,000?
6,700?
Yeah, $6,700 about, uh, total, and these are replacing, uh, things that were, what, what'd you say, John, 78?
75.
75? 1975, so.
They're both on Incrobat, right?
Yeah, they're side by side. It's one station.
Yeah, the corrosion from the gas and.
Terrible.
Stuff, salt, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, sanitary pump station top and hatch for $6,771.32 out of line item 590-930.
Support.
Yeah, motion and support. Yeah, motion and support, any discussion? How long does it take to get this stuff in, John, do you know?
He said probably four, five weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, that far.
So, we'll get it done before winter, hopefully. All right, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next we have board member comment, Cindy?
I just want to say welcome to Sam and Ben, nice to have you aboard, and I want to thank all of our, excuse me, first responders, we had a very, very busy weekend in the township, and your service has been greatly appreciated, as always. That's all I got.
Okay, Mark?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate Benjamin for being part of the Clay Township Fire Department, you'll have a good run here, I'm sure, with the chief at your side, and Samantha, thank you very much for joining the group, appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Same, and also congratulations to, you know, the planning commission for Chris.
Yep.
Is it Dag, Daggy?
Daggy.
Serving with us, that's gonna be awesome, and Bonnie?
Yep.
Continuing to serve, and I want to get with you soon, John, because I still haven't had the tour.
Oh. We gotta give her the tour of the wastewater treatment plant.
I'm just glad everything is done with the raft off, and we can.
Yeah, yeah, it was.
Tough one.
Yeah, I wanted to say also congrats to our first responders, both police and fire, it was.
Good job.
Incredibly busy, and everyone handled themselves in a very professional manner and way, and I think there was one point where, we had, the, the Coast Guard was out here, you know, they came with, I don't know how many, fifteen people, probably, the commander for the whole district came out here, he's never, we never had a commander out here, I mean, this guy's in charge of ten states, and George was telling me, you know, they took him out on the airboat, him and the guy in charge of Group Detroit, captain is pretty high up, I wasn't even surprised, he, he showed, well, he showed up because commander was, and they, they were very impressed how we were handling things out there, and on the airboat, and they had nothing but good to say about the whole, the whole situation, I mean, there's a lot of boats, and, and it, stuff happens.
Right.
Uh, there's, there's no way it's not going to, and, but, you know, our guys are prepared as best they can for anything that, that comes up, and likewise with the police, you know, we, we had a lot of help from other organizations, the state police, DNR, the Border Patrol, it was all hands on deck, so. So, like I say, kudos to all our first responders, congratulations, Sam, Bonnie, congratulations, and Chris Daggy, and Ben, congrats for you, too, so I hope we see you around in the station and whatnot, and we'll work on that breaststroke. And other than that, it's, I always say, it's, I'm glad this weekend is a bittersweet thing, it's, it's a lot of fun, and, but it's kind of like music in the parks over now, because summer's winding down, but I'm glad everyone was as safe as possible out there, and we get a lot of outside people coming in, and they're not the smartest always, so we gotta be careful for ourselves and them, just how it works, so. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, thank you for coming, everybody.